Pastor Jackson not here, so I'm gonna have Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco lead us in vocation. I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this point. Thank you.
If you may bow our heads and ask our Heavenly Father to bless this city and bless all of its leaders, that we may make the right decisions here in our community in the best interests of all of our residents. Watch over our firefighters, our police officers, all those that put themselves or lives in harm's way. The men and women who are out fighting for our freedom today. And those that were hurt by the devastating fire up here near our foothills in Glendora. And any other place that has devastation throughout the world. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your hand. Your heart ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of clarification, I believe Mr. Mayor closed the closed session upstairs, and then we reported out an open session here.
That is correct. Thank you. Thank you for the notification. Okay, at this point, council members wish to close on anyone's behalf?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to, I would like to close on behalf of Robert Mooneyham. Emma Mooneyham's husband, longtime, she is a longtime member of the Baldwin Park Women's Club. But they have also been residents for 67 years on Mangum Street. And he passed away and his services were last Friday.
Wow, okay, thank you for notifying us. That very well-known family.
He also served, a veteran for many years, so we also wanna offer our condolences.
Thank you. Alright, at this point, I'm gonna have Madam City Clerk or City Treasurer take the roll call. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
She is out. I'll go ahead and vouch for her. Thank you.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Lieutenant Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk Maria Contreras. Alright, so at this point, we don't have any presentations on the agenda here. So I'm gonna go ahead and go into public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. Thank you. Box me three minutes.
I'm sorry, is it open?
Yes, it is. Yes, yes.
Good morning, good evening, everybody. For all the folks in the City Council and all of you gentlemen that have helped me try to keep this city clean, thank you very much. There's a couple spots on Dalewood that look pretty bad. One of them is at the end of MCM's rental property or state or whatever it is. Right next to Kaiser, it looks like a dump. It should be cleaned up. I'm sorry I haven't got with everybody. I took a video. I didn't have time to bring it. I forgot it. I have another problem. All the graffiti that was up there, thank you very much for taking it off. It looks pretty nice now. Now let's continue to keep it up. I understand that these people got less money than we do, so let's spend it and keep it clean. I have a complaint against this project behind me. When you put projects up like this, you put the dollars and cents. This is what it's gonna cost us to build it. This is what it's gonna cost for us to receive back the money that we've put into it. And how much profit we make on it. All them pictures up there shows us a lot of buildings, insufficient parking, and so on and so on. When you put stuff up there for us to look at, the public, there has to be figures up there that we can look at. It doesn't do us any good to look at your financial report from 2015 to 2055. Good Lord's willing, I won't be wrong. When you put these numbers up there, people are gonna say, oh my God, we're losing money. Then we can vote it out or vote it in. They're gonna spend all this money. Uncle Sam only gives you a share of that. And then he says, you pay me back. Of course, we never do. But that's the problem when you put this stuff up there. Any, there's nowhere in any of those pictures on any side where you guys have it. It tells us how much it's gonna cost, how much Uncle Sam's gonna put up there, and how much profit are we gonna make? If we can't make a profit, it doesn't deserve to be in this city. Taxpayers' money is what we need. I don't know where you're gonna get somebody to rent a three-bedroom, two, three-bedroom, two-bass room. That's also expensive. You have cities in other places that have the same thing, and they're having a hard time renting some of these. Find people some jobs in the city of Baldwin Park, and then maybe they can rent these. But if we can't make a profit, forget it. Send it down the road and get something else that will. I am, I don't get tired of telling you folks, but the name of the job here is to make revenue for the city of Baldwin Park and its residents. We all work here for the city. Let's keep it here, but we need revenue. That means big-time money. As far as the containers go, the gentlemen along that area, they've been cleaning it up. The containers have to go. And there goes my three minutes.
Thank you very much. Alright, good evening.
¿En español?
Ah, sí. Un momento, por favor. Who's going to, did you wanna translate?
Good evening. I just want to know if you could help me. I was crossing the, en qué calle era?
Francisquito y Ramona.
La calle Francisquito y Ramona, y el semáforo estaba en verde. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Whoops. I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm here to see if you can help me. Sorry. My three minutes are up. Sorry. I'm here to see if you could help me because I don't have the money to pay for this citation. I was crossing the street on Francisquito and Ramona, and the light was green. In the middle of the road, the light turned yellow. So then it turned red. So I don't feel that this is just that I would get the citation because I crossed when it was safe. I put in words for him. The ticket is for $490. Is there anything that you could do for me?
Okay, you know, we're gonna refer it over to one of the captains in the back so they could kind of guide him because we're, as far as the city's limited, but... Yes. Alright, thank you. Gracias. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Is that good?
Yes, it is. That's correct.
My name is Jessica Valenzuela, longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park. I came before you, City Council and Mayor, to address you at our last meeting regarding the resolutions that the, that the community proposed to resolve the checkpoint arrest and matrícula consular issue. And I'm here before you again to inquire as to the status of the resolutions that you all agreed to put forth. In addition, to inform you that the saturation patrols continue. And that folks are still receiving tickets for, and not just tickets, but their cars are being impounded. Simply for not having a driver's license. So we're still waiting for the DMV rules and regulations to come out. And unfortunately, Baldwin Park, not only the police department, but now also the Baldwin Park Unified School District Police are also pulling folks over and impounding their cars. Obviously, as we've talked before, I don't think I need to mention again the hardships that this causes for families and children. But I also noticed that on the agenda, this issue is not there. The, the language for the resolution has not been broadcast. And the minutes from the previous, from the previous meeting are not on the electronic record. So I'd like to inquire as to the status of that, and by when can we expect these resolutions to come through? Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
My name is Jim Lesner. I live in Hermosa Beach. I wanna talk, I too wanna talk about the semaphores, the red light cameras. This is a real red light camera ticket. It has four pictures along the right-hand side. You've probably seen one before. This is a fake red light camera ticket. This is sent, this is something that's legal under the California law. It's actually specified in a bill from the legislature. The pictures, all four pictures are at the bottom. And the bill from the legislature says that it has to have this warning at the top, which says, courtesy notice, this is not a ticket. But the bill didn't say that it had to be in Spanish or any other popular language. And I'd like you to ask your police and your legislature, legislators, to make sure that that heading has to be in Spanish also. Those tickets, by the way, are not filed, the fake tickets are not filed with the court, so they can be ignored if the person can read that heading at the top that says it's not a ticket. Next thing I wanna talk about is this. This is a graph that I did. This is of the whole history of your red light camera program. And it shows how many ticket, how many times the cameras flashed month by month, and how many tickets were issued. And something that it shows is that there, there were ups and downs. There, there was basically a gradual decline trend. You have a hand out there, and there's more on the back. Until August of 2011, when it popped back up. And I, I hope that you will ask your police to tell you why, and, and also why it continued to go up. I think I know why it popped back up right at that time. And that is that there were these articles in the LA Times that said you could ignore the tickets. Two articles at the end of July 2011. And people probably reacted to that and became a little bit less careful about their habits. But why did it continue to go up, and then why about a year later did it go down precipitously? Really should ask your police to explain that. Finally, I wanna tell you about a little sampling that we did at the city of Hawthorne. We got 50 tickets from the court. We looked at the ages of the people. There was nobody under 26, nobody at all. The average age on conventional straight-through violations was 42. And on the more complicated left turns, it was 50 and a half. This basically says that these red light cameras are a test of your athleticism. And basically, all of you guys there are the prime candidate age, me too, for getting one of these tickets. And the young guys don't because they can react real fast, the split-second reactions that it takes to avoid one of these tickets. I would ask you to ask your police to give you a report about the average age of the tickets here in Baldwin Park. And break it down by the straight-through violations versus the more complicated ones. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Alright, move along with public communication.
Thomas Carey, former resident of Baldwin Park. Well, we live in an English-speaking country. I don't understand why everything has to be printed in all the other languages. Tremendous cost to the taxpayer. Learn English, go to English school. I don't know. As for the cameras, well, if you're older, you need to be aware and stop, start applying the brakes sooner with that. I'm 52. I've never gotten a red light camera. I'm, you know, you stop for a red light. As for the towing of the cars and things like that, that's a state law thing. That's something totally different. Baldwin Park Police, as well as police other places, have to tow the car for 30 days. What part of no license, don't drive, don't you understand? You create your own hardship by driving that car. Let me tell you something else I didn't get at this last time. The registered owner of that car has insurance. If he lets somebody drive that car that doesn't have a license and they're in a crash, whether illegal or resident or citizen, whatever, his insurance company's gonna tell him to hit the road. They're not gonna pay the claim. And the thing is that, is the person, the other people that they hit, if they're at fault, the one without the license, they're gonna sue the registered owner of that car, and they're gonna take all your stuff. Your house, your car, maybe they garnish your wages too. For letting somebody drive your car without a license? Are you out of your mind? Because you would have to be if you're doing that. Now, you lose the car for 30 days, you get it back, and if it cost you a grand, maybe you've learned a lesson. But that's a lot better lesson than losing your house or having your wages garnished for the rest of your life. And things like that, unless that appeals to you. As for the police, keep doing the checkpoints. Don't announce where you're gonna have these things. That's not the idea. The idea is to catch the people that are high on marijuana, which, by the way, they have a swab test to check for that now, as well as other drugs. Tow the cars away. They're not supposed to be driving. If they don't get that, and they're not getting it yet, and if the school police have jumped on board, good, tow them away. I'm, if I was sitting where you are, Manny, and these people came in here and said, oh, you're not gonna enforce the law. You know what I'd tell them? I'd say, well, now we're gonna have one every week, or whatever time allows. That's the way I think about things. Remember the letters you sent me from the code enforcement? You were supposed to scare me away. That didn't keep me from speaking here, and I'm still speaking here, and I don't even live here. I'm not scared off that easily. As for the, the towing, tow them away. Hold it for a month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Don't drive without a license. Bottom line.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sure. We'll take a moment, City Clerk.
Hi, my name is Daniel Barr, and I'm here because my family owns a property right here on Downing Avenue, just south of Ramona. And it is an automotive property with basically inline automotive thousand-square-foot warehouses that go about, have about 50 feet of frontage on the street and then go way deep. So there's really no retail frontage there. But since this, I guess, Ordinance 1290 designated this a redevelopment zone, the city has stopped issuing our tenants' permits to operate business there for automotive, which the building was originally intended to. So now we have vacant units and businesses that can't operate in the city. And basically, what I handed you was pictures of the property. And Ordinance 1290 says that we need to put restaurants in there, jewelry stores, bookstores, art stores, instead of warehouse units, mechanic shops, manufacturing, which are the only businesses that would ever go into that building. So if you look at the pictures and some of the uses that you guys are allowing us to have there, you'll see why we're having a hard time bringing in new businesses into that center. So basically, I'm here to ask you to start issuing the CUPs, or what the building was originally intended to. And if, if that area ever does get redeveloped and someone wants to do something there, we're happy to move them out. But until a redeveloper comes back in and buys the area or does something there, we would just really like to have that use back.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Julian Casas, head boxing coach at the Parks and Rec, and longtime Baldwin Park resident. First off, I just would like to thank the council for supporting our Baldwin Park's boxing club. If you know anything about it, if you go back one year ago from today, boxing club was in pretty sad shape. Other gyms laughed at us at the mere fact that we operated three days a week. You know, it was embarrassing for a lot of different reasons, but the coaches, the coaches there, they love the program. And they, they love working with the participants. And the participants themselves comprised, were comprised mostly of like youth within our city. They showed their love for the boxing program, voiced their experiences, and, you know, pleased for support. And so, fast forward a year later, you know, a lot has happened since then. And I'm proud to say that the fate and upward progress of the boxing club looks very promising. We now run five days a week, Monday through Friday. Couple of weeks ago, we actually had a special training day on a Saturday, where a large group of boxers, around 14 to 20 participants, traveled in city vans and ran the cross-country course over at Mount SAC. And they all did pretty good. They came back, and then they trained for another hour and a half in the gym. Everyone loved it. Everyone wants more of it. I can't think of a better place for kids to be and all the positive benefits they'll receive from it. I think using the community center on the weekends when ten, when kids tend to roam the city makes like perfect sense to me. And I think Esther Snyder, one of the founders of In-N-Out and a big contributor when they built it, would be very happy that the very building she helped erect is being used for its intended purpose. I would like to point out, however, that holding a Saturday training, one coach, one and a half hours, cost the city less than $20. So I think the benefits far outweigh the cost, and I hope that you would support, continue to support us in that area when we're, you know, wanting to use the gym on the weekends and as we head off into competition. Now, not getting far off the topic, one of the reasons it's so inexpensive is that, well, you have really cheap labor. So, so much in fact that I believe the starting wage for a coach is about $8 an hour with zero benefits. So, the last position, I believe, was flowing. I think we had about two applicants. One that, one of the guys I used to train, and he, I asked him to put an application, and he was willing to do it. Just take into consideration that the government is raising the minimum wage. And so, you know, it could, it's pretty easy to offend somebody, like save myself when I worked there 14 years.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Paul Cook. I'm a resident here. I'm also an attorney at law here. And I'm gonna finish Julian's sentence. What he was gonna say is he worked there for 14 years and got a 40 cent raise from Manny Carrillo. I haven't been congratulated. I made the cover of La Peñón, front page cover story on Sunday for them, for a Mexican immigrant that I'm gonna bring back to the United States. And so I just wanted to point that out, and I wanted to give a very warm welcome to Jim, the editor of Highway Robbery. I did not bring him there, but we've worked together when we sued Los Angeles three years ago. And I think he's a fantastic person. He runs the highway robbery. So all these people keep coming back to Baldwin Park that know me, such as those civil rights attorneys, and I am not inviting them. So I'm, I'm very proud to have you here. You're doing a great job, Jim, and welcome to Baldwin Park. So I'm here today to speak about Manny Carrillo and the stuff that he's done. And so one thing that he's done is that he has outsourced the boxing gym to some professional fighters. And while I was there in May, he asked for a personal donation. And so let me tell you, they haven't been paying anything, and they get paid thousands of dollars at shows. The city is subsidizing their pay. The state, and we've asked them, Julian Casas has asked them to pay. And guess what? They said they don't have to pay because Manny Carrillo said so. I have his email asking him, asking why he does this. I'll read his dumb email next time. And you're gonna see how dumb his answers are. But I just wanted to let you know that it's against taxpayer standing law 526A. 526A, we should not be using taxpayer money to subsidize a commercial profit. And that's what he's doing. And Alcazar, who is a commercial professional coach, has been bringing in players from out of state, from Arizona, not charging, sneaking into the gym, making profit. And then one time, excuse my language, but I have the First Amendment right. One of the coaches had told all the kids, eight years old and up, get the fuck out of the ring. They're eight years old and up. And, and so they said that Manny Carrillo allowed him to do this. Why is this happening? He gets paid $200,000 a year to make these kind of decisions? Do you want me to read the emails to you? Can you answer that question, Manny?
This is, this is a public...
I asked a question. It's a First Amendment right. He doesn't have to answer, Mayor. Can you answer that question?
This is your public communication.
I asked a question. It's my First Amendment right. Do you not understand that? The audience is disgusted. They're disgusted with people like you because you wanna know something Manny Carrillo says, stuff like, I'm gonna come around and poke you from behind to gay boys. That's very offensive, Mayor. You should find it very offensive. Okay, so...
Excuse me. Audience, please.
Yes. So I'm still going on, and he's given Julian Casas a 40 cent raise after 14 years. This coach...
And your time's up.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alright, thank you. Alright, so at this, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, you can come up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cornelio Guzmán. Can somebody speak Spanish?
Yes, yes, we'll bring someone.
I have a small business, and I bring out things outside, some articles, because the business is very slow. So I keep getting citations from the code enforcement.
And then this is the police, they're molested, they're molested, they're molested.
It's the second time that I get a citation.
And around me, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, they're doing the same thing. But I don't know, they're bothering me and giving me the citation.
Around my business, there's other business that do the same thing, but they are only bothering me and giving me the citation.
And the problem is that they're molested, they're molested. Manches, they're taking chairs and tables. And, and I don't feel bad, right? Because somehow they're trying to attract attention.
I don't oppose from my other business neighbors, like Manches, that they bring out tables and chairs to attract business.
And the police are saying that I can't take things because it could happen to accident, right? And the things I take aren't for accidents. I think that the chairs and tables could cause accidents.
The officers tell me that whatever articles I bring out, that they could be, cause an accident for the people. I understand that, but I feel that the tables and the chairs that Manches will be more dangerous.
And also, the place where the pawn shop, they're taking 20 bicycles out. And I don't think they're bothering me at all. And I don't feel bad either. But if it's an accident, they could have more accidents.
The pawn shop brings out the bikes, and they could have more accidents also. And I don't say anything, but my things are safe, and I get cited.
I would like Manuel Lozano to help me, for example, so that the police don't bother me. Because I have to take them out to maintain my family, also to pay taxes, and to pay the city's license.
Mayor, I'm asking for your help because from that business, I have to pay the taxes for the city to support my family. And the permit for the city.
All right. At the end, I'll go ahead and comment. I'll, I'll, I'll terminate, entonces, we'll say commentos.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a, Jose, 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 ¿verdad? I think, yes, thank you. All right, good evening.
Margarita Vargas. This is an easy one, but I asked before the change of power and I wanna repeat it again because nobody did anything about it. And it's about the stop signs that are obstructed by trees, you know, like an Aethel, Walnut, Center. You don't see the, the stop sign until you're in there, you know, in the corner because the trees are covering it. So, I just asked for public works, I don't know who is in charge, to go around the streets and trim the trees there are doing that, the stop signs. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? An Aethel in what, Margarita?
There's several trees, Aethel, Center, Walnut, where there's trees on the street, on the sidewalk, and their branches, you know, they cover the stop signs.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, I guess the gentleman, he's with Captain Rain also, so they're taking care of that part. Also, I wanted just real quick about the, the police department and the rollout in the street, referring back to not recognizing the matrical. Matricula, I know that the police department went with the Mexican consul general and there's been discussions, it's been positive, so we're gonna continue working in that particular effort, just to let everyone know. And just may, make a comment real quick of the gentleman that came up here and spoke. Anyone could come up here and say anything they want, fabricate whatever they want. Let me just tell you, Manny Carrillo, you are extremely loved in this community and you know that. And it's unfortunate that you have to put up every, every city council by this person who never stays here to hear the comments. It's what he is. He's a bully and he's gonna do whatever he can to come up here and just fabricate whatever information. He will fly with whomever walks in here to try and put credit on himself, but I just wanted you know, you're loved in this community, much more so than he will ever be in the city of Baldwin Park. But it's unfortunate that First Amendment does allow him to come up here and outright create, fabricate whatever he wants. He's done that to me, he's done that to some of my other colleagues on the city council, but you know, at the end of the day, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be put down by an individual like that. And that's just the reality and it's what he is and there's nothing we could do about it at this point. So, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the agenda. So, you know, I just, I closed the, did I close the public? Okay, then come on, come on up here. I made an error. Okay, you lucked out.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was gonna give you guys a break not to have to hear me, but I do wanna say that the individual that came up here and used the provocative speech, he's not speaking on my behalf and I'm sure he's not speaking on behalf of others as he stated. That's number one. Number two, I don't have a clean vocabulary. I'm twenty-one years Navy and you know, when I have to say what I have to say, I do it. But one thing us military don't do, we don't speak like that in front of women and children and official status. And you should not allow anyone to use any of those words in front of people, especially with ladies present. I'm sure that's when our forefathers put the constitutions, laws and everything together, they had no intention for people to use that kind of vulgar language. So, please, you know, in the future, that's like strike three, get them out of here. We don't have to listen to that. It's their three minutes, but when they get out of line, you got that gavel, use it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And also Manny, before I forget, I'm gonna, well, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and declare the public communication closed. And Manny Carrillo has to be probably one of the most ethical persons that you could meet and that's important. He's above board, has been, and there's plenty of residents in the city of Baldwin Park that could vouch this particular person. And, and I know that everything that was mentioned here is absolutely false. There's, there's no evidence whatsoever. It's again, the person creating these particular stories. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and go into.
Can I make just a quick announcement if I may?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I just wanna let the community know that our Assembly member Roger Hernandez is having a house fair where they're gonna offer free services on March fifteenth on a Saturday from nine to twelve. So, if anybody's interested in coming by, they're gonna offer a lot of raffles and games. And once again, it's just for the community, anybody's welcome, so come by. Thank you. It's at the Julia McNeil Senior Center, so please stop by.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. All right, yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I would like to pull item four.
Sure.
For further discussion at the special meeting this coming Wednesday.
Well, let me. We're not, we're not at a consent. We're not in there yet.
Oh, sorry.
We're almost there.
Sorry.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to say that on a comment that a young lady came up here and talked about, that immediately after the last checkpoint that we had, staff did go back and talk to the citrus court to resolve the issue with the matricula consular and there was an agreement that it, that it could be used as an identification and so staff is gonna continue, the police department, to use that as an identification. So, just so you guys could look at that.
Yeah.
And, and continue that. We'll still have meetings with the community in regards to any future checkpoint, but right now they're, they're on suspend, so we'll continue further. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and into the agenda. So, the first items that we have, consent caligence, and I know that Councilmember Cruzbaca wanted to pull item number four, am I correct?
That's correct, thank you.
All righty.
Mayor, I wanted to pull item number three.
Okay, number three. All righty. So, at this point, anyone else wishing to pull any item? If not, I'll go ahead and move for consent caligence with the exception of items number three and four. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Item three, requested by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, resolution, appointing representatives, alternates as official representatives of the city and consideration of appointments to establish in-house community committees. Council, Vice Mayor.
Okay, Mayor.
If I, I just may, I think our city clerk is to read the, the titles and go down the list as we appoint or designate someone, is that okay?
Okay.
Point three, okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, section one, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the San Gabriel Valley Water Association. Quarterly luncheon held on the second Wednesday of the month, various locations. Members received a stipend? No. We have as a representative, council member Susan Rubio, alternate mayor Manuel Lozano.
Okay, I'll, I'll recommend Susan as the representative and the alternate Mayor Lozano.
Mayor, are you okay with staying the same?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll accept that, thank you.
Section two, the city of the, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives, alternate members of the LA County Planetation District number fifteen and twenty-two, fourth Wednesday, one-thirty PM, district office. Members received a stipend? Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and finish.
Representative now is Mayor Manuel Lozano and alternate mayor pro temp, Monica Garcia.
I see that. I think that's mandatory that the mayor sit on that committee, so I'll just recommend that he stay on that committee.
And I'll recommend Cruz, Cruz as the alternate.
And Cruz? Yes, I would love to be the alternate.
Okay, section three.
Okay. Section three, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the League of California Cities, LA County City Divisions, first Thursday, seven PM, Metropolitan Water District Courtyard Cafe, first floor. Members received a stipend? No.
Okay, I would recommend for new appointees, representative is Cruz and alternate is Susan.
Would you be okay with that, Cruz?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
All righty.
Okay. Section four, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the Civil Defense Area D Director Meetings, third Thursday, various times and locations. Members received stipend? No. We have representative chief police Hatzl and alternate mayor Lozano.
I would recommend representative of Chief Taylor and the alternate Mayor Lozano.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
All righty.
Section five, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the City, of the Civil Defense Area D General Membership, third Thursday, eight-thirty AM, Glendora. Members received stipend? No. We have representative, city council member Marlon Garcia, alternate chief police Lily Hatzl.
Mayor, I know Monica's not here, do you think that she would like to take this appointment?
Sure.
I know you can't speak with, for her, but.
Right.
So, we can give her something? You think she'd be okay with that?
That's fine. We'll go ahead and put on there.
And also, I mean, I think it's advice that we have the chief of police on that committee, so let's keep the chief on that committee.
Section six, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the Independent Cities Association, second Thursday of each month at various locations. Members received stipend? No. The representative is mayor pro temp, Monica Garcia, and the alternate is Manuel Lozano.
I'll change out if anyone wants to go in those.
I would like to recommend Ricardo Pacheco if he wants to take that one for the representative. Cruz, are you interested? I can't make that time. Are you interested in taking the alternate since the mayor didn't want it?
So, yeah, that's fine.
Section seven, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representative and alternate members of the Independent Cities Association Least Finest Authority as needed, various times and locations. Members received a stipend? Yes. Representative, council member Ricardo Pacheco, alternate CEO Vijay Singal.
I would like to just recommend we leave it alone. I know that we'd have to change Vijay Singal to Captain Taylor since he's currently the interim, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Section eight, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representative and alternate members of the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee, first Thursday of each month in conjunction with the League of California Cities Meetings. Members received a stipend? No. Representative, Mayor Manuel Lozano, alternate council member Susan Rubio.
Mayor, I would like to just recommend that he stay on. I believe it's also mandatory. Do you think that Monica Garcia would like to leave the assignment the same?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, so, we'll leave it the same.
They only meet once a year. It seems like.
Section nine, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representative and alternate members of the Southern California Association of Governments, first Thursday of the month at nine AM headquarters. Members received a stipend? No. Representative Susan Rubio, council member, and alternate Ricardo Pacheco, council member.
I'd like to recommend representative would be Cruz and the alternate would be Councilwoman Susan Rubio.
Cruz, would you?
Yes, that's fine.
Mind taking that? Okay, that's fine.
Section ten, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representatives and alternate members of the Foothill Transit Zone. Cluster meetings held quarterly at the West Covina Headquarters Executive Boardroom. Members received a stipend? Yes. Representative, council member Marlon Garcia, alternate council member Susan Rubio.
I would like to recommend as representative, Councilwoman Cruz and alternate Councilwoman Rubio.
I'll accept.
Fine.
Section eleven, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representative and alternate members of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, third Thursday, six PM, various locations. Members received a stipend? Yes. Representative, mayor pro temp, Monica Garcia, and the alternate is council member Susan Rubio.
Sorry, do you mind reading that one more time?
Yes, it's for the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. They meet third Thursday, six PM, various locations. Members received a stipend.
I would recommend Susan, if that's all right, for the representative.
I'll accept that.
And I recommend yourself, Councilwoman Cruz.
Can you make a?
For the alternate.
That's fine. Thank you.
Section twelve, the city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as its representatives, alternate and substitute alternate representative to the governing board of the Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, ICRMA, second Wednesday, bi-monthly at various locations. Members received stipend? No. The representative now is council member Ricardo Pacheco, the alternate is Mayor Manuel Lozano, and the substitute is human resources Letitia Lara.
Okay, I would recommend we keep it the same, but substitute Shama for human resource manager.
And just make sure that we let Shama know that that's a responsibility that she needs to take care of. Thank you. Oh, she's here. Okay.
Okay, you're on the committee.
Section thirteen, city council of the city of Baldwin Park does hereby appoint the following persons as representative members of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, quarterly on the third Thursday at four PM headquarters. Members received a stipend? No. The representative is Susan Rubio and representative, now the representative Ricardo Pacheco.
Okay, I would recommend appoint representative, Councilwoman Susan Rubio and as the second representative would be Councilwoman Cruzbaca.
I, I can attend. Are you okay with that, Cruz?
That's fine.
All right, so that's item number thirteen, right?
Yeah.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to all the revise, the revisions for the councils committees. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any objections? See none, so move. Thank you, thank you. All righty, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next.
I'm sorry, where? Item four was pulled and that was by?
Yes, item four.
Councilwoman Cruzbaca on item four.
Approval of employment agreement with Mr. Gray, and Gray's director of finance.
And we're going to continue that so that I can further review that.
Yes, that is correct. All right. So, we'll make that motion.
Well, did you wanna bring it to the next meeting or what did you want?
To the special meeting on Wednesday.
You wanna call special meeting on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm open. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Motion second, any objections?
Did you wanna also include?
We can also go ahead and include the HR contract at that same time so that we can discuss everything.
Sounds good, sounds good.
So, special meeting next week, Wednesday at six?
Yes, next Wednesday at six o'clock.
Six PM?
Six o'clock, okay.
Uh, six PM, I can, I'm better off at six.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
All righty, sounds good. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go over to the public hearing, which is request for a consideration of mitigated negative declaration of the environmental impact and specific plans for the facilitation of the up to seventy-two unit mixed use, affordable multifamily residential, commercial, retail space within the MU dash one. So, at this point, we're gonna have Amy Harbin go through this. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, honorable mayor, council members, members of the audience. As the mayor requested, this is asking for city council consideration of a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, a specific plan, and then a tentative map. As the council is aware, the specific plan is actually considered a mini zoning code for a defined area, which you can see on the screens in front of you. The specific plan contains typical development standards that you see in a zoning code but are written to accommodate the development specific to this site. For this specific plan, there are five lots that are currently under consideration. Those are currently utilized as surface parking, city hall, the arts and recreation center, and then also the parking structure. The project is submitted, submitted as shown, which was shown in attached exhibit B. In the specific plan includes sixty-nine affordable dwelling units, one manager's unit, excuse me, about thirty-six hundred square feet of interior common area for the residents and approximately ninety-five hundred, I'm sorry, about six thousand square feet of exterior common area for the residents as well. In addition to that, there is also about fifty-nine hundred square feet of retail area which you can see, there we go, right here facing Ramona Boulevard. The reason why we're writing this specific plan and why it's necessary is to accommodate The reason why we're writing this specific plan and why it's necessary is to accommodate the apartment component of this project on C1 zone property. Go back to the previous one. Actually, this area in the city hall property is zoned C1. Currently, our C1 designation does not allow apartments, hence the specific plan to allow that. Additionally, we also have development standards that are taking into consideration the unique nature of those projects, and those are all detailed in table number three in your staff report. Moving on to the proposed architectural theme, the theme of the building is obviously modern with straight lines and angular elements. There are bright muted dark colors that are proposed as accent colors. There are two four-story structures. The first one, which holds the, excuse me, which holds the ground floor retail as well as the common interior area for the apartments, and then also residences above it. The back building is completely four stories of apartments. This is another view. This is actually an aerial perspective that you can see. You can see the four stories and the massing and how it relates to the height of city hall as well as the height of the parking structure. The parking structure shall hold the parking spaces for the residential development. The retail develop, the retail portion of the building can be accommodated in the parking spaces up here along Ramona Boulevard. And then finally, the parcel map is consolidating five lots or portions thereof into two lots. Each of the proposed lots meets the minimum development standards for newly created lots. We've included comments as conditions of approval from outside agencies, and should the proposed subdivision be approved, it should meet all the standards contained in the current code. As a point of information, the planning commission at their meeting on January 22nd unanimously voted in favor of recommending the City Council approved the environmental, the specific plan, the tentative map. So, at this time, staff is recommending the planning commission, or staff and the planning commission are recommending that, following the public hearing, the City Council adopt Resolution 2014-01 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, A, approving the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, B, adopting the findings of fact and approving the specific plan, and C, adopting the findings of fact and approving the tentative map to consolidate five lots or portions thereof into no more than three parcels within the mixed-use one and C1 zones." Location is 14412 through 14436 Ramona Boulevard. The applicant is Rome Development Corporation for SP 1301 and Rome Development Corporation for the City of Baldwin Park for the parcel map. The case numbers are SP 1301 and PM 1432. And that concludes staff's presentation. As a point of note, Derek Allen with Rome Corporation is here to answer any questions or to provide a brief presentation at your discretion. Thank you.
All right, so at this point, council members. Council members have any questions they wish to ask? Just to, real quick, just let the general audience know that it is a mixed use and part of the open space that, that will be part of the actual development will be utilized for, for stores, for the potential revenue building as well. So, I wanna make that clear as we go on. The stage that we're at right now from this point is they're gonna be seeking the funds for the actual project. So, council members have any other information they wish to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I know earlier someone stated that it may be difficult to afford these apartments, but it is affordable housing. So, for a family with limited means, it makes it attainable, and otherwise, they wouldn't be able to live in such a beautiful facility. And everyone knows that I teach full-time. And to me, another valuable aspect of this project that I find, that'll bring a lot of positive things to our community, is that they do offer other things that an apartment building would not. And I know that when we think of a project like this, we think of just apartments, and that's it. But they offer a computer lab, tutoring services, after-school programs, and this is a facility that is run by the, by the company. And so, for children that come home sometimes without parents at home, or children that don't have the support at home for homework, I think that that's something that we have to consider. It's, it's very valuable, and I, it's one of the items that really caught my attention. And again, that's why I would like to support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Um, as I spoke to Derek, and thank you very much, that was a beautiful tour yesterday. However, the density still bothers me. The fact that there's seventy units in that small area. Some of the units are very small, and also the traffic situation that will be pouring out into Downing, Bogart, even though there is just, I believe through Downing, that's where people will be coming in and out through the parking structure. But the density really bothers me. I believe it's too crowded for that area, even though it does seem like a wonderful project. But I would like to express that I just think it's too dense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will be, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking at this project here, and I'm also, wanna know if we, I know there were some meetings with the police department last week, so what I'm gonna request, if this could come back to the next meeting, because I wanna incorporate some of the issues that were brought up by the police department. And I know that there were some changes or modifications that were gonna be made. So, I wanted to see that. And also, if you could take a second look at the density issues. I know we brought that up at the previous workshop meeting. You know, I don't know what we can do to maybe make the units a little bit bigger, or, or maybe less units, I'm not sure. And possibly look at, and I know, I know we've come along this far, but just to see if it would also work across the street in where the, what we call the Baldwin Park Museum, the old museum site, where there's some parking lots backed up. The city owns that property, and it's an awkward-shaped property, but I just wanna know if something would work there as an alternative. Not that I want a lot of work on it, but just to look at it. And it's kind of corner of Sterling Way, Main Street, and Pacific?
Yes.
Pacific. And then just bring it back to the next meeting so we can kind of look at it. I know there's timeline issues on this, but before we go forward, I would like to look at those three issues that we, that we talked about. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, we have no further, further questions, and I'll go ahead and. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna, I will go ahead and make a motion for the parcel of the land within the same zoning designation, 14412-14436 Ramona Boulevard. Assessors, parcel number. So, at this point, I'll go ahead and move for, for the.
Uh, Mayor, we're talking about item six, right?
You wanna go ahead and push it back?
Okay, so my motion would be to bring it back to the next.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and second the motion. We'll go ahead and, and bring this back at the following meeting, the regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
All right, all right, that's fine. Any objections? See none, so move. All righty, so at this point, we'll go over to council communication, and Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco has on the agenda here, open the application process for all city commissions to include planning, parks, and recreation personnel and housing commissions.
Mayor, let me just request this item. I noticed that we missed it. If we could go back to consent calendar, item number three, we missed the in-house committees.
Oh, you're right. Okay, let's go ahead and.
And that was on the agenda in the back sheet. I guess none of us noticed it. So, if I could just kind of quickly go through these of city.
Let's go ahead and, a motion, make a motion to open that up.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open up consent item number three for review of the in-house committees and representatives, which is on the back of the, of the item three staff report. It's the last page in the back. I think we missed it because it was on the back. So, if our city clerk could announce the positions there?
Okay, for the graffiti task force, we have existing member Mayor Lozano and council member Ricardo Pacheco.
Okay, I would recommend they stay the same.
Are you okay with that, Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine.
In-house freeway task force, we have council member Marlon Garcia and Mayor Prote Monica Garcia.
Okay, I would recommend Councilwoman Cruz Baca and myself.
Cruz, can you do that?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I was writing it down.
For the two-by-two-by-two City Council School Board and Water, Mayor Prote Monica Garcia and Councilmember Rubio.
For the two plus two? Okay, I would like to request that Ricardo Pacheco, myself, and then Susan Rubio.
I'm already on there. Yeah.
Oh, you're already on there.
I don't mind.
So, just Ricardo?
Yeah, just add me there.
Okay.
Hey, for the shopping center committee, we have member Marlon Garcia, Mayor Lozano.
I would recommend Mayor Lozano and Susan Rubio.
I'll accept.
All righty.
Mayor, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Workforce and Career Development Enhancement Committee, Mayor Prote Monica Garcia and Councilmember Marlon Garcia.
I would like to be on that committee.
Okay, I would recommend Cruz Baca, Councilwoman, and myself on that committee.
That's fine.
All right, okay.
Okay, also, Mayor, I wanted to, and I think it's in this.
No, I think it's at the end of the report.
I wanted to add to that two plus two plus two plus one. I also wanted to add the Mount SAC School Board Representative be contacted and be a part of this committee with the school board and the city and the water board, because there's possible discussions of, of putting a satellite campus, a Mount SAC satellite campus here somewhere in the city. We wanna begin that conversation with our representative from Mount SAC, which would be Laura Santos, who's the Board of Directors for the Mount SAC School Board. So, that's something that we want to just begin discussions on. So, I don't know if that has to be agenda-sized again, or how do we add that, or just the appropriate time? We're gonna add another.
Did you say the water board as well?
Yeah, 'cause it's a part of the system.
The water board's already on there.
It's the school board.
Oh, Mount SAC board, already.
Well, I wanted the City Council, the school board, and the water board, and the Mount SAC board to be on the same committee. Unless you guys, two plus two plus two plus one.
So, they'll be all invited. In other words, you're gonna have four different groups there.
Yeah.
All right, makes sense.
Then we can reach out and see if they wanna participate.
Makes sense. All right.
Okay, and we'll have to find a name other than two plus two plus two plus one.
All right, so at this point, I'll make a motion for the changes.
I'll second it.
And the objections, see none, so move. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go ahead and go back over to Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco's request. Councilman Pacheco, please.
Okay, let me just flip over to here. Okay, so I had, what did I have here? Oh. Okay, so first one is open the application process for all commissioners to include planning, parking, recreation, personnel, housing, for everyone to reapply, give them one month from today to bring it back at the, I guess, what we're in, in the first meeting of March, on new applicants at that point.
I'll second it.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, the next one is.
Let me see, I'd also like to establish a new committee to the city's in-house committees to include a bicycle route committee, as well as a Mount SAC Board of Education, and include them on the two. Okay, so we already did that part. We, we've, we're gonna contact Mount SAC Board and include the Mount SAC Representative for this area to the two-plus-two committee to be part of future meetings. But I'd like to have the bicycle route committee, in-house committee, and I'd like to appoint Councilwoman Cruz Baca to that committee, because she's an avid bicyclist, I think, or tricycleist, I'm not sure which. Would you want someone else to join you on that? Or you, can you handle it by yourself?
Yes, I would, I would like to do that. Mayor Lozano, would you like to join me with that?
You know what, I guess, I'll ride with you from my house and I'll meet you halfway.
That'd be fun.
You guys could go on those.
And we're not invited, right?
That's good.
You could go on those dual-seat bicycles. We'll rent you one. Okay. Also, I'd like to look into a new design to update the city council's stationery. I just, for the last fifteen years that I've been here, I always wanted to update it. But just of city.
A logo.
Just come back with something new.
Original, yes.
City manager, you could have, I don't know, some, some updated contemporary-looking stationery.
Sounds good.
I'll get somebody assigned to that for you. That's great.
All right.
We're done.
I also wanted to add an in-house committee for a city council traffic committee, which would review a number of traffic issues that we have in our community, one being the red flags and traffic signs throughout the city, and they're always an issue, and also to look over checkpoint policies, and that this committee would be in review of that. Any council members want to join me on that committee?
I'd like to join you on that.
Okay, so you and I will be on that one.
Well, I also like to open it up to maybe residents, anybody that would like to participate. Maybe have staff decide what kind of group we want, how large we want it, and open it up to maybe a business owner in the city, as well as maybe two community members, so we can have just a nice variety of people putting their ideas together.
This would be an ad hoc committee, so we'd just maybe go for six months, and then we could review it.
All righty, okay, so anything else?
So, that would be that. And then also, to have a 1290 review workshop. I know a lot of business owners have brought to my attention, they wanna review 1290. It has caused a lot of issues with our businesses. So, with the change of the economy recently, I know that, you know, 1290 may be out of step with, with some of the changes occurring now. We could take a second look at that so staff could bring that back. I guess that would fall under, would that fall under, Mark? Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can look at it.
Try to bring that back maybe in two meetings from now or so?
Yeah, not the one, the one after.
Yeah, like the one after, give you some time to put the information together. But you'd have to update us on 1290 again, kind of the, the background and history.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you.
And then tell us, you know, that we wanna, you know, how we wanna manage to change that. Again, a resident brought up issues with stop signs being covered by trees of public works. Could you get on that? Oh, also, forgot. I attended the ICA committee, this, the ICA Independent Cities Association Committee, and I was supposed to, and I was also, Councilwoman Monica Garcia attended, also Mayor Lozano. Each of us are supposed to give a report, so I'll be brief. This was the ICA Independent Cities Association, January 31st to February 2nd. It was their 36th Annual Winter Seminar housed in Santa Barbara. There was a number of great sessions that were held there. I'll briefly tell you what was there, and I'll just talk about the ones that were important. They had a, a session in regard to public and private security, how they work together for cities, Affordable Health Care Act and pension reform. During the lunch session, they gave legislative updates, and the, on session four, they gave a fire department, community paramedic transporting patients, and those were some of the main events there. Sheriff Lee Baca was there and did give some update on Sheriff's Department and safety. But one of the sessions that were very important, that I thought there was a lot of information we could share with, with the city, and that's called the active shooter incidents, where I know a lot of us have heard about shooters that go into their schools, or they go into malls, and they begin just randomly shooting at, at individuals. And so, what we can do to prepare each other, and there's a lot of work that we could do beforehand as a community to prepare ourselves for those kinds of incidents. Our, our police department, our fire department, our school police, and all emergency units need to work together and practice together when those situations come up, whether it's at a school, at a local mall, or throughout the city. It's important that, that they all train together. And I believe that they do have those sessions. I think last year, there were some sessions where, where our police were practicing with the local school police on some of these incidents. But there was also a discussion about training a lot of the community, a lot of the teachers and the residents, because they're the first responders, they're the ones that actually are in the incident. If in the Boston bombing, when they showed us some of the pictures of that incident, there was actually a man being pulled on a wheelchair, and it wasn't fire or police officials. It was actually individuals that were there watching, spectators watching the event. One of them knew CPR. He happened to be a veteran, a soldier. And one of the individuals that was injured had his leg, was cut open with an artery sticking out, and he was literally holding his artery, and they showed this picture of him holding this, the person went and bleed to death, and they had a tourniquet on him. So, he knew some first aid, and that's the first responders. And we need to train our community as much as we can to be ready to respond. And our teachers, our, you know, local city employees and school employees, you know, in stores like Walmart or any other stores, they should have a lot of training to, to be able to, to create relationships prior to events that could happen. So, those are some of the things that, that we might work on, or we will work on here in the city. So, it's important to identify our first responders in this case, and that was the point of that, of that one session. They also discussed issues in regards to budgeting. That was one of session two. They talked about, the Los Angeles City talked about some of their, how they work together with some of the budgeting issues they had, and there was a lot of issues that they talked about, in particular to their city, where they had, they have about three different pension plans that they had to work with, one for the, the police department, just regular employees, and their fire department. So, they had to be able to work all those different organizations to be able to come to an agreement and be able to change their, their planning for retirement pensions so that they could be able to balance their budget. And that was kind of what a lot of them were discussing at that point. So, those are some of my reports. I'm sure the other council members will, will update you on what they had discussed at that, or observed at that meeting. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. I just wanna say, I attended, I think it was very interesting. I think it's a control, I'm not certain, or the direct, the capacity, sir, Mr. Santana in the City of Los Angeles also mentioned how they got together with all the bargaining units. And of course, we're looking at a city that has over a billion dollars in actual operations of the actual city itself, or actually above a billion, 'cause I think LAPD itself is one billion dollars. Talking about how they got together with bargaining units, twelve, and there was twelve different decisions that were made in attempting to meet the city halfway. And out of the twelve different proposals from these bargaining units, one of them met the expectations of what the city was looking at. So, and for us, of course, long-term, we need to also be looking at those particular areas, because we don't wanna just continue to move things down the road, because eventually it's gonna hit bottom, bottom line. So, overall, the perspective, and Ricardo, Assistant Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco touched up on it, about the first responders, active shooter, which I know the police department has participated with Kaiser on, on a couple of those particular mock drills. And it's important for the community to be aware. And I think for us to continue on, and of course, the, 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 the Baldwin Park Unified School District, they've had their particular. they've had their particular active shooter program and have emergency type of preparedness for the schools, the all twenty-one schools in, in the city of Baldwin Park. So it's a lot more to learn, a lot more things that we need to make sure that we're focused on in order for us to be able to sustain ourselves at this current level that we're at. Also, wanted to say that, as we know, the Governor Brown, and whoever's a fan of his, mentioned about the drought throughout the state of California, so I want to ask that the, that the Valley County Water District representative, or whomever it is, come to the city to talk to us about the state of the water. I know we have nine wells, I think only four are active, to let us know, and to see what type of actions we might want to take, using the now to let the residents know about water conservation. So if we could send that back to the board members and let them know, and have them do maybe a little small presentation. I know I've gone to some of the events that they have on some of the drought plants they have, but overall, the water itself, I mean, how much water do we have per square, and, and so on and so forth? So if we could make that possible, to have a representative here talk to us about that, and what we need to do to enact that throughout the city of Baldwin Park. Alrighty.
Mayor, before we close, also just want to state that we have a very good Parks and Recs director, I think he works very hard, brought a lot of grants here to the community. The salary that he gets paid is commensurate with what other directors are, it's not a, it's a job that requires an education, you know, at least a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and somebody that could bring in grants. And I think that our director has done that, done a good job in making sure that we have a lot of programs. Our programs here at the park are almost at the, at a county level. Morgan Park is used by a lot of individuals, not just from the city, but throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and that's a lot because of the programs that our Parks and Rec Department pulls together almost seamlessly. You go there to whatever event, whether it's a concert in the park, whether it's our annual, you know, what do you call it, our running, our twelve K programs?
Five K.
Five K, sir. I'm not a runner, as you can tell. But, you know, just, he, he does a great job, and I want to thank him for, for a lot of his work and what you've done here, so.
Thank you. Councilor Cruz Baca?
Yes, real fast, I just want to thank Dan Wall, we met with the Public Works staff a week ago, and we came up with a lot of good solutions about coming up, not only with the sweeper, but a lot of things that are needed for potholes and so forth here in the city, and thank you very much. We are going to check into being very strong with some of the graffiti removal that, that is Metro Links and Caltrans problem. So thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Mayor, just want to share a letter, just really quickly, I want to share that we received a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation congratulating the city of Baldwin Park for our designation for Tree City USA, and they were complimenting our efforts in going green, and so I just want to say that I am very proud of the work that all of us as a city have been doing in the past years to go green and plant trees. And so definitely want to continue on that, on that pattern, but I was really excited to receive the letter congratulating us on, on everything that we've been doing in the past year, so thank you.
Alright, thank you. At this point, yes, Madam City Treasurer.
Yes, I would like to thank our finance director for doing the presentation on the budget, and how he showed us that we were in the black and not in the red.
Alrighty, thank you.
Right, I guess we should mention, we, we did have a workshop in, in our finance area and showed a lot of the, the changes that have been made. We're, we're still continuing to work through our budget, there are a lot of, as the finance director pointed out, a number of areas that we have to work on. And so I think it just takes a few more sessions to be able to discuss that and then be able to present it to the public. So yes, our finance director's done a fine job on trying to put all this information together and make it understandable for, for all of us. So yes, thank you for that presentation, it was very well done.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, unless council members have anything else to say, I will move to adjourn. Viva Baldwin Park. Good evening.
I'll second that.